All right, we're live. Hello, everyone, and welcome to another live edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley. We're joined today by our founder and creator Greg Kilwin.
Hey, everyone. We're glad you're here. We've got some exciting reveal with the rose oil today, so we'll get into that here soon.
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, we're super excited to have you guys here today. And as you're coming on, go ahead, let us know where you're coming in from. If you signed up for the rose oil, let us know. Are you excited to find out if you're the winner? We'll be doing our big reveal here shortly. So I'm going to pop over, share my screen real quick, give you guys a rundown of what we're going to be doing today, and then get right on to business. All right. So first and foremost, as I move toward the screen here, can you see it?
Yes, I can.
Fabulous. All right. So today, we're going to be talking about how to write great emails. A big part of our feature set, if you will, with the Get Oiling platform is the ability to send out broadcasts, as well as other types of communication. And no matter whether you are just getting started with us, or you just want to learn how to write better emails, even if you're just using your Gmail or what have you, you're going to learn how to do that today. This is a totally free training. We do these every single week, where you're able to come on and get help from us live. We will be doing that here in just a bit as well. But yeah, we want to welcome you, everyone who is here, who is a part of this community, or who is a part of the broader Young Living community, who is seeking to grow a business with Young Living, we are here for you. And we are excited to be working with you today and rewarding you, because that's going to be super exciting. All right, so part one of today is going to be training and a growth hack. We have a new feature inside of our platform that is going to help you save time, and time is money when it comes to your business. Part two, we're going to go into Q and A and live help. This is going to be your opportunity to ask us questions and get hands-on help, no matter the topic. And of course, before we get started, we are going to announce our giveaway. And so I'm going to hand it over to you, Greg, and we're going to let you guys know about our rose oil giveaway. Who wants to know the winner? Show of hands. All right. Let's go.
I am going to share this here. Can you see my screen? There we go. All right.
There we go.
Cool. All right. So instead of doing, you know, instead of seeing it right away, we need a short little video here. So we're going to play it. It's about 30 seconds. It's got our rose oil winner in there. See, we've got the bottle right here waiting for the lucky winner. So let's roll this thing.
All right. Congratulations, Geneva Locklear. Are you here with us right now? I want to go ahead and bring you out. Going to say a few words. We'd love to congratulate you live. If you're there, you are. I'm going to allow you to talk. There we go. Geneva, if you want to unmute yourself.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm so excited. It's actually Jenova, but I get Geneva a lot, so I'm all right with it.
All right.
When Greg texted me this morning, I could not believe it. I'm like, my heart's racing. I'm so excited. I jumped up and down. I had to call my mom, because that's like the best oil ever. And we always talk about wanting to have it.
Here it is. It will be on its way here shortly. You're ready for the call.
Yay, I'm so excited. Thank you guys so much.
Absolutely. Jenova, are you an active distributor? Are you growing a business with Young Living?
I am. I've been with Young Living since 2015. I did reach executive two years ago, but I had to have major surgery about three years ago, and I had complications. So I'm working on my healing journey right now, trying to heal, because I had brain surgery.
Bless you. Well, I think rose is actually a very good one, especially for nerves and just for general healing. So that's going to be beneficial to you personally as well. That's exciting.
I know. That's what I thought. As soon as I got the text, I was like, yes, I can heal my brain with the rose oil.
Fabulous. Awesome. Well, we can't wait to hear back from you once you get it, see how things are going for you, and follow your journey. We're glad you're a part of this community.
Thank you so much.
All right. All right. Congratulations again, Jenova. Fantastic. Always, always love a good story. Love a good winning story. Awesome. So congratulations, you guys. We do a giveaway every year over convention. We do a drawing. Lots of you entered, and now you have heard from our winner this year. Congratulations. All right. So I'm going to go back to a share and keep the ball rolling here, so you guys can get on with the learning, and then, of course, on with your business. Let's see. All right. Wait, that's, is that it? Yep, that's the one. Except it closed on me. Sorry, you guys.
The day for tech, right?
Uh huh, uh huh. All right. It is such the day for tech. All right. So I think I found it. Oh, it went right back to the one. All right. Share my screen. Let me know that you can see it.
There it is.
All right. Fantastic. So this is, and funny enough, I'm going to be passing this back over to Greg here in just a second. But what I want to share with you guys, this has been a request, a requested item. It's something that oddly enough, across the industry, doing the, like, serving in the way that we do, folks who would send out emails and such for marketing, this is not something that you see very commonly. So we have a brand-new feature that's available to you. If you have ever sat and started composing an email in our system that you're going to send out as a broadcast, but then you need to stop for some reason. Maybe, you know, somebody's at the door and the dog's barking, or you just feel like you need to come back to it later. We've got a way for you to keep that momentum going and not lose your progress. So Greg, I'm going to flip this over back to you, and you can show us this new feature and exactly how it works.
Absolutely. Let me share my screen. Is it showing okay?
Um, let me see. Don't. Yes, yes, it is.
Awesome. Okay. So for those who are familiar with Get Oiling, we have, this is our contact manager. In here, I just clicked on manage and filtered it down to me. So what we have here, we've had a lot of requests over the last period of time, anyway, to, you know, something like Ashley was just saying, like, the doorbell rings, or you interrupted, or you're writing the world's longest epic newsletter, and you're like, I need to save this for later. So we've added a email and text draft feature, which was super awesome. So how that works, anytime that you're sending an email or a text, there'll be a little save draft button, and then there's a new draft screen, some changes to messages. So let's say I'm sending my newsletter. I click actions, I hit mail, and I'm going to send the world's best newsletter. And I'm busy writing it up, and I forgot about that appointment that I have, so I need to run quick. There's now a new little save draft button right here. So if I just click that, what it does, it saves it, and then there's a new little graph messages deal that pops up here. You can click the button as one way of getting to that. The other way, if that button goes away, because it does go away after a little while, if you click on messages down here, it'll take you to the screen. This familiar, you know, if you've been here, it's familiar, but there's some new links on the top right now, so you can see graphs. This is what was there before. It shows you what was there before right away, but then you can just filter down to your graph messages. You can see just what you have scheduled, which is kind of a nice little feature on top of that. Because sometimes it's hard to distinguish, and you've got to look at the list here and see, when was this? Was this today? Is this tomorrow? Whatever. But, you know, if you click on schedule, you can just see the schedule one, for example. But now under drafts, here's the draft that I was just making. And you can, you know, it shows it's a draft, and you can view who it's being sent to. You just click on it or click edit, and it'll pop up. You can resume where you want it, you know, sending, you know, edit it, whatever you want to do, schedule it for different time. You can either save changes, which keeps it as a draft, or when you're ready to go, you can click send, and then it'll send it on whatever schedule. If you have it scheduled in the future, it'll send it that time. Otherwise, it will, you know, if it's sent now, it'll send it out as soon as it can, usually within a minute or two. So yeah, this works with both email and text. So if I come, I should that here. My contact manager will search for me again, and I'll show you what that looks like for texts. Same thing. Let's say we're texting everyone here. Best text, didn't even remember their picture. So you can put in a cool picture here, save that draft, and I'll just go over here and view scheduled messages again. And whoops, that was the wrong button there. But anyway, drafts. So yeah, here it is. So here's my new text. Shows what's in there. You can edit it. Same thing, just same as email. So you can save a lot of time, just a more convenient workflow than starting from save replies. But either one works just great. So that's the new feature in a nutshell there.
Yeah. So I wanted to let you guys know in terms of, you know, because I framed this personally as a growth hack, right? This is a way for you to hack your productivity. Now, in the context of your use of this, not just, you know, if the doorbell rings, but also in regular practice of using this feature, think about this. When you are going to, let's just say you create an event in your events manager in Get Oiling, and you want to have all of your emails set up and scheduled, so that people get a reminder or a text by text or email right before the event starts, if it's online, or maybe 24 hours before, if it is in person. You also want to have stuff that goes out automatically to save you time after the fact, to follow up with people. Hey, how much did you love it? Did you have any questions for me? Or hey, when's a good time for us to get together and discuss what you saw? Right? This is stuff that you can go ahead and draft out, especially if maybe you don't have the link yet, or maybe you don't feel like it's quite ready. You can go ahead and get the framework in place, and then go back and make the edits that you need to, and it's already there waiting for you. I think that in terms of all the parts and moving pieces of a strategy like that, a lot of us will stall and not do the work, because we don't have every single thing perfectly that we need at the time. This allows you to get it done, but then go back and add to it before you send it off, before you have it scheduled. So you can make progress without having to wait, if that makes sense. So let's see. Yeah, awesome. Yeah, this is really cool. We're seeing some messages come through in the chat here. Gwen asked if you can see a list of the people that a message was sent to. And Greg, can you show real quick? Because I know you wrote the answer here, but this may be something for folks who watch the replay, who want to understand how that works.
Absolutely. So yeah, when you're viewing drafts, just click on view, and it will take you to the contact manager, and it will show you who all will be receiving that email or text. So you can definitely do that.
Awesome. Awesome. All right. Cool beans. Thank you, Greg. And let's get over to our training. And we'll talk about, today, we're going to actually be talking about how you can send better emails. All right. So we're going to talk about how to write great marketing email, some of the key things that you need to know to get really good at this really important thing. All right. And this does, I'll put the caveat here, it does absolutely apply to text. Although you're going to be, I'll give you some instances where you can change text up, although I think that text feels a little more intuitive to most of us than email does. So you'll see some broad application here as we go through this. So there are basically three main pillars of great email copywriting. Of course, we can, I mean, I could spend a six-week course teaching you guys about copywriting, but I want to really give you the stuff that is most actionable and easiest to understand, that you can go out and put to use right now. And these are at a high level, sort of, you know, philosophically, if you will, the most important things to keep in mind if you want to be a great email copywriter. And copywriter just basically means you're writing email that leads to sales, writing anything that leads to sales of a thing. All right. So the first and most important, yes, most important part of your email is the headline. Because the headline is the first thing that people read, and it is going to determine whether or not they even open the email. Obviously, if you want people to not ignore and to actually click and open and read what you have to say, you got to have a good headline. We'll talk about that. You also need to have a real focus and specific approach to the language that you use. We'll break that down as well. And then, of course, a call to action, because if you're creating a piece of material that you hope will generate you more sales and growth in your business, you got to make sure that you're telling people what to do. Not in a bossy way, but in a way that delivers results. All right. So we're going to talk about all these things. First, let's talk about your headlines. Excuse me. First, like I just mentioned, your headlines are a gateway to your readers. If your headlines aren't enough to make somebody want to open and read, they're not going to do it, right? So you want to use actionable language in your headlines. This means use verbs, all right? So use this for, or don't miss this opportunity to. You're speaking directly to a person, and you're using actionable words that make sense to them. So instead of saying August newsletter, you could say something like, use these three oils to get you through the sweltering heat of summer. Right? Which one of these, if you received it, would you open? August newsletter, or these three oils will get you through the sweltering heat of summer? I think you know the answer. All right. So personalize as well. In Get Oiling, we have tags that you can use. They're very easy. They're a little bubble that you drop down, and you can use that person's first name. This is incredibly effective. If you say, hey, Ashley, don't forget to use these three oils to get you through the sweltering heat of summer, this person feels like this is for them, right? Or when you receive an email headline that has your first name in it, your eyes tend to go to it first in your inbox, right? You look at that above all the other things that shout, like, 30% off, sale, sale, sale. If it has your name, you're going to look first. That's an important thing to consider. Use the tags, and then also use second-person language, meaning you are speaking directly to that person, you, your, right? Not general, broad. See, the thing is, when we're sending especially a broadcast email to multiple people, what we can tend to do is speak as though we are speaking to a lot of people at once, because that's what we know in our minds that we're doing. But what we want to use our language for, both in the headline and in the body of your email, is you want to use this language as though you were sitting down and talking to someone one-to-one, or if you were getting on a phone call with somebody, one-to-one. All right. So use tags, use their name, and use second-person language. Now, where this applies to text, of course, text does not have a headline. It has maybe a first sentence, so they can see it before they open it. Using their name, if you have it, is very valuable. Obviously, that tag, if you just have people who opt in by texting in a code, you might not necessarily have their first name. So bear in mind, if you are using text marketing, always speak in second person. Wherever it's possible, use those personalization tags. Now, you also want to make sure that your headlines are congruent with the body of your email. If you're promising something, those three oils to get you through the sweltering heat of summer, you need to talk about those three oils and how they get you through the sweltering heat of summer in the email, right? Or you need to summarize each of those points, and then maybe link off to articles that you've written, and so on. So make sure that whatever you're promising in the headline, you're delivering on the inside. And then, finally, with your headlines. First, you want to get clear, right? So what are you talking about in the email? What is the purpose of the email? Why would someone want to open the email? You always want to be answering the question, what's in it for me, that your reader is just intrinsically asking all the time with every piece of information that comes at them. What's in it for me? What do I get out of doing this? Right? Those are the things that drive our actions, so keep that in mind. So get clear, so that people understand what's going to be there, and then get creative, right? So a lot of us can get, if we are more creative-minded, we might just get super creative first, and then it's kind of ambiguous as to what is, you know, what lies beyond that headline. So be clear first, and then give it some flavor, if that makes sense. All right. So now, let's talk about language some more, because this is obviously critical. When we are writing in hopes to influence, to grow an audience, and to sell and share, it's really important to take into consideration the way that we're communicating with others, because you can glean a lot from body language, right? But we miss out on the body language when we're just dealing with writing. So we want to make things as clear as possible. So the first thing that you want to do is remember, when you're writing, you're always needing to answer the question that the other person is just fundamentally asking, what's in it for me? Why would this person want to click? Why would they want to read? And why would they want to take your recommendation? Right? And what you need to do when you're writing is to speak to that, not to say, here's what's in it for you, but instead of coming from the position of, I have a product, I need to sell it, understand what the benefit is to the other person, and say, here's how you cool off. Like, are you burning up right now? Here's how you cool off. And then you say, here's the oils that I recommend, or here's a product that I recommend, right? It's that order, as opposed to, here's the promo, you should buy it. By the way, it helps with this. You should say, you've got a problem. Here's how you solve it. I've got the product for you. That's the order you want to go in. All right. So first, the first thing you want to do when you open up your email, so somebody clicks, the first thing that they read needs to remind them in some way why they're hearing from you. So you signed up for this because you were interested in learning X, Y, and Z, so here it is, right? People get a ton of emails in their inbox. You probably do. You may be sitting on tens of thousands of unopened marketing emails. A lot of us are. So make sure that you are clear. Using that personalization tag that uses their first name is a great place to start, but always give people an opportunity to be reminded of their relationship to you and why they're receiving that email. It could be as simple as having an image header that you use every time you email, at the top of your emails, that has your name, and maybe the name and purpose of your email newsletter. It could be that it's your name and maybe the name of your team, even if you're, you know, if you're mailing out to folks who are a part of your organization. These are all things that are really helpful to keep people remembering when they open something that, oh, yeah, yeah, this is, I'm supposed to be reading this. All right? And then, of course, like I mentioned before, you want to keep that one-to-one language. You want to speak directly, second person, to the person that you are speaking to. People want to feel like this is personalized. People want to be heard. They want to feel heard, and this is a way that you open that door to further, you know, one-on-one conversation, where you can actually help this person further. But if they feel like you are talking to them like they are a number, then they're not likely to respond the way that you would want them to. Give me a quick show of hands, if that makes sense. Do you feel like communicating with someone who communicates to you like you're a number? Of course not. So keep it personal, and remember, just speak to them like they're in your living room. All right? Now, I mentioned this briefly before, remember you're talking benefits, not features. Okay? We are not talking about, we're not talking about the kit, right? We're not talking about ER, really. I mean, unless this is, you know, unless you have a specific series that's talking about that, which there could be some exceptions, but by and large, we are talking about what's in it for me, right? And that's answering the question of somebody who is not tied into the culture and language and products of Young Living. So they need to understand why they should even keep reading, right? So instead of saying, 30% off, like, that's a great big image, or whatever, 30% off, or PB promos for this month, say, three ingredients, bug-free summer. Want to learn more? Right? You want to come at people with something that feels relevant to them personally, directly. And then, once they say, yes, I want to learn more, you can dive further into and bring them closer to all of the things that you know as a result of being a part of this company, right? All right. Another thing you want to remember, and this is sort of the golden rule, really, in digital communication, be brief. You don't want somebody taking up a ton of your time, right? You don't enjoy having to read through or watch super, super long things, most of us, to be able to kind of get to the point, or to get the benefit that you signed up for, right? And by signing up, I could also just very much mean seeing an email header and clicking it, okay? What people came for, they need to get as quickly as you're able to deliver it. All right. So be brief. And then use a summary. If you need to, if you're really looking to deliver something that's longer form, then use a summary of what you want to talk about, and then provide a link and have more of that information in an article on a Get Oiling custom page, or in a blog post, or even in a further series of information, right? However you want to do it, if you want to get them into your member area, where they can really deep dive into topics, or if you want to use other forms of media, just don't keep, don't make your emails too, too long. The exceptions can be in newsletters, but even those tend to be summary of this with link to that, summary of this with link to that, right? You want to make it digestible. Long-form stuff is not typically digestible to the volume of people you want to be communicating to in order to get the result that you want. All right. This is, if there's anything that you take away from what I share with you today, is to be yourself, and don't try to be some, you know, neutral political form of yourself that you think that more people might like. All right? When you are communicating online, whether it's on social media, in your emails, on, you know, if you're making content for YouTube or blogs or whatever, don't be vanilla. Be your flavor and be proud of it. Vanilla's delicious. You've got your own swirl in there. Okay? Be that thing. And you're going to attract people who are into that. You are going to repel people who aren't, who would be a waste of your time, right? So be authentic. People can sniff you out if you're trying hard to be something that you are not authentically. So whether this is in text, whether it's an email, whether it's on your about page on your website, posts you make on social media, be you and who you feel you are at the core. If you feel like the things that you're about and that you want to talk about are a little controversial, embrace it. There are people who are waiting to hear from you in your boldness, and it gives them permission to go and be bold, too. At the end of the day, you are not selling essential oils. You are selling a transformational lifestyle shift that can be delivered to someone by being a part of this thing that you are a part of. You are not going to convince people that there is transformative potential for them if they see you playing small. So be your biggest, baddest, brightest self. Vanilla's delicious. You got more going on than that. All right? So be yourself in your communication, because people want to hear from the real you. And they know if it's not the real you, even if they don't know you, people can sniff out if you're putting on airs or trying, right? So just be yourself, and you'll be more comfortable in everything that you write, no matter what it is, because you know that there are people, enough people, there's so many people in this world, and we're talking about doing something on the internet, right? Where there are literally billions of people, right? And you're in a company that is capable of serving people from all over the world, billions of people. There are enough, there is an abundance of people who would resonate with you and your message, and be served by you and your message, and they're looking for you. Okay? So be you. You will attract the right people that way. All right. Now, finally, your call to action. This is a really important thing that you need to make sure that you're including in everything you do, whether, again, you're posting on social media, or you're creating a piece of content. But then also, really importantly, if you have gotten through the point of having someone read your email headline, and they said, yes, I want to read what's in it, and then they read your email, now you got to tell them what to do with it, right? You need to have a call to action. So always be explicit. What should this person do next? So if you have shared, you know, three ingredients, bug-free summer, where do they go next to get that? What is the next step for them? You need to be explicit about this. And there is nothing pushy, or, excuse me, or salesy about doing this. The fact is, is that you are the leader in this process. You are the person who knows the way, and this person that's reading what you've written is there, ready to follow the steps that you have outlined. If you aren't outlining steps for what they need to do next, if you aren't leading the way, they won't follow. So make sure that you're clear. What do they do next? Do they click a link? Do they hit reply? Do they call you? Make sure you're clear. What do they do next? And use specific language. So hit reply now and tell me X, Y, Z. Click the link below and follow these steps. Get this now by clicking this link, right? Make sure you're abundantly clear. Do not write an email that doesn't have a thing that you tell someone to do next. Do not write a piece of content on a blog post that does not tell someone to do next, even if it's leave a comment below or hit share or something like that. You could even, in terms of specific language for email, you could say, forward this to a friend who you think this would help, right? That's another thing that you can do. So keep that specific language in everything that you do, and make sure that people are really clear on what to do next. And so always remember as well, second most important thing, be yourself first, and second, remember, talk to people like they're sitting in front of you. Talk to them like they're in your living room. Use your BFF language, right? Like, you're just talking to someone like your best friends, and you know each other well, and they get you, because they will get to know you that way, even if you aren't one-on-one yet. So speak to them like they're one-on-one. So speak to them like they're one-on-one. They will respond in kind. They will trust you more quickly. And they will then of course, become more open to making what is in essence, a lifestyle shift that will help them achieve the goals they have in their lives. And then of course, you know, grow, grow your membership and your impact on this journey that you are on as the Young Living distributor. All right? So you guys, that is our training. And if you want to sign up for future live sessions, if you watch this as a recording or if this is your first time with us, maybe you don't know about this, go to getoilink.com/weeklyworksession. You can sign up for these trainings that we have live every single week. And what you also get when you join us live is Q and A. Now we have an opportunity to get hands-on with you, to answer your questions and to even get into your back office and help you make sense of your marketing and your tech. So now we have this opportunity. I'm going to get out of my slides and get one-on-one with you guys. I see we've had some, maybe some questions come in, in the chat. Uh, and yeah, so we're excited for what's next. We have any questions, you guys? Definitely bring them in. If you want to see any demos of what we were talking about, you know? So if you want to see how to personalize an email, maybe show of hands. Uh, let me lower the hands first, sorry. Show of hands, if, if you would like us to demonstrate how you can go and personalize an email or a text, uh, we can definitely show you that. Or if you've got other types of questions. Oh yeah, we got some hands. Let's do this. Got a few of them. But yeah, if you have any other questions, definitely come and, uh, and ask. All right. So Gwen asks, I don't know if that reply went to everyone.
I can share. I think she was just coming to us directly. But yes, another question about like, how do you, you, or can you use personalization tags in the, in the subject line itself? So let me show you that here. Yes, you can. It's just yes. Um, it takes one extra little step compared to the, I'm putting it in the message body. So here I am back in the contact manager. Um, I'll click actions. I've got my list that I'm mailing to and I'll click mail. Um, so here's a little button that Ashley was talking about where you can personalize the messages with the tags. So click on that and then like in this case, if I personalize it with the first name of contact. Um, it usually puts it in the body wherever the cursor was last. But in the case of a subject line, you just want to cut that and then, um, paste it up here. And then you'll end up with that in the first, in the subject line. So my contact first name. This is what, you know, you can finish off the rest of your subject line and it'll just replace it with whatever their name is when it's sent. And the same thing does apply here. If I go ahead and put that in here too. So there's no reason we can't put them in both subject and body. So that's how you can personalize that. And the same thing actually does apply to texts too. So if we close this out of here, then you click texts instead of the mail. And the same little bubble appears. So you can click that first name of contact and then you can have the message here. So yeah, you can, uh, you can personalize both the mail and the, uh, and the text messages. No problem at all. You just have to make sure that with the case of an email message, if you wanted in the subject, you have to copy and paste that tag. This contact first name tag basically is what we have to send to subject line. But it works on both email and text, which is super cool. And especially for texts, um, if you're sending it to a bunch of people. It's a look like you typed all that out and it saves you so much time. You get 20, 30, 50 people to text. So it's just been an incredible amount of time to do that. And then more people who reply, you can reply them individually. So yeah, it's great.
Yeah, that is, it's so cool. So I think the, the way that you just broke that down, I think is really valuable. For those of you who don't, uh, who don't really know this, uh, about this kind of a feature, uh, is that you could send a message out to 10,000 people and every single person feels like you wrote it for them individually. And, and that's really what we're, what we're looking at here is the potential for you to, to communicate as though you're reaching out one-on-one to, to an unfathomable number of people who could then take that next step because you directed them to and because they've established that trust with you. It's a really, really powerful thing to be able to do. Um, you know, whether you're just getting started and you've got five members or you've got 10,000.
Yeah, absolutely.
Do you guys have any, anybody else have any questions or need any specific assistance? This is your time to get help. Uh, you know, if you feel stuck in some way, if you want some clarity on marketing, on tech, um, you want some feedback on some, some area of your site that you've been working on, this is your opportunity. All right. I think I just saw somebody come in on the Q and A. All right. Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. Are, you got the same one?
No, Gwen had a quick follow-up question. I, I do get this on, on occasion in the support box. So just a quick note, if you're testing out the emails and you send them from yourself to yourself, sometimes the mail doesn't go through, especially if you're using Gmail, use other providers, sometimes it'll come through in a spam folder. So when you're testing mail to yourself, it's usually better to try it out with a different email. So, um, just wanted to throw that out there. Um, Q and A, I haven't looked at that yet, so I don't know if you saw that.
Okay, yeah. Hold on just a second. All right. So Glenn Gale asks, I have no team, but would love to use the tools here to start. How would one leverage this tool to begin growing a team? That is a great question. So in essence, um, the answer is everything. So, um, if you are just getting started, you don't have anyone who's building yet. This is a great way for you to maintain communication with via the emailing and texting feature that we've just been talking about today with folks who are your members. It's also a way for you to set up reminders for yourself to follow up with people. So we have follow-up plans at Get Oiling. We've got tons of training. If you go to youtube.com/getoiling, you will see an entire playlist and each of them has a specific topic in terms of the training that we cover. Uh, follow-up plans are a great way for you to stay on top of the ball yourself internally. So let's just say you, um, you're sharing, obviously. You're, you're working toward getting to that point where you've got a team. You're sharing. So you want to make sure that with every single person that you invite, you are on top of the ball and you're able to follow up with them in a timely manner and not forget about it. Right? So you would have a follow-up plan that you can apply to that contact. And then of course, you would be putting each person that you invite into your contact manager. And you could enter in all of the notes that you need to about maybe what they liked best about it, maybe how you met them and so on. Uh, so that you're able to really just keep track of the spider web network that you create with people as you build this business from the very beginning. So above all else, it's a fabulous way to stay organized and to begin building in systems and practices into your business. Excuse me, that will serve you for scale. Right? So, so what you do to get to senior star is the same thing that's going to get you from, you know, from, from platinum to diamond. But once you're, once you've got to senior star, right? You've, you've got plates spinning and you get more and more plates spinning the higher up you go. And it's very easy to start dropping those plates and start feeling overwhelmed if you don't have the organization and processes in place. Get Oiling helps you to build those and very easily build those. And, and even just to understand what the stuff is you got to do in the first place. So, um, and then when you start building a team, you're going to want to regularly communicate with them. Use those follow-up plans to check in and, uh, and, and get in touch and keep people, um, keep people engaged as they get started. All right. So, um, if, if you want, if you want more advice, uh, there are definitely some team building videos that we have if you go to our YouTube channel. And then of course, uh, you could just get started with us for a dollar. We lead you through in an automated fashion. You get emails every day that teach you everything that you need to know about building the structure, the basics, whether you're coming in and you don't have a team yet or whether you're coming in and you've got a huge team. Uh, we're able to help you build what you need to get more of your time back and to spend more of your time more productively building your business. All right. Sherry has a question that is not on the topic of emails. Excuse me. Uh, Sherry would like to know if there's a way to create recurring tasks.
Uh, I'll say, I'll say yes and no on that one. Because we can create follow-up plans which allow you to create repeated tasks. They don't recur indefinitely. Uh, I can give a quick demo of that here if you want. Screen again. So follow-up plans, they're, uh, so first of all, follow-up plan is just like a, a bunch of to-dos that are prepackaged and ready to go. So like, see if you quick demo of what a to-do is. If I go visit my contact record here, uh, and then I scroll down a little bit, there's some add, do, you know, some, there's a button here where I can add to-do items. If I click on that, then I can just say like, follow up or whatever and put a date on there and hit add. And then boom, I've got a new to-do, new to-do item on your, your top frame. Um, on the list, on the very bottom, I guess if you want to page three, because this is a whole account. But right here's the new one I just added today. Now, what a, a follow-up plan is, is it's a series of them. So it's under contact settings if you want to set them up. Uh, click on settings and then follow-up plans. And I'll go create, well, actually you can create them, but I'll, I'll show you one that has one already built in. So you can see here, these are like day 60, day 121, 82, 40. You can put as many of these actions in a follow-up plan as you would want. So you could put 20 of them or 100 or whatever you want to do. They could be every day, every week, every beginning, you know? At some point they would end of course, and you know, I'm like, I think you can put them out for like three years or something like that. Um, so it's plenty, it's almost indefinitely. Um, but then once you have a follow-up plan in place, if I go back to the contact record here and I click add on the to-dos, uh, the follow-up plans show up down here. So if I would go ahead and pick this Silver Builder Follow-up Plan that I was just looking at, add follow-up plan, what it's going to do now, um, I'll go to the last page here. But you can see like all these check-ins along the way are in there as well. So you can sort of create recurring tasks in that regard. And so some of the built-in follow-up plans are there. They're like monthly follow-up plans or quarterly, that sort of thing. But they do eventually end. My recommendation there on the end, the last one is to make a note to yourself that if you want to go back and add that follow-up plan again to that person, see if that, that, it's probably a good point to reassess that anyway periodically. So, so yeah, you can, you can do it through the follow-up. Hopefully it helps.
All right. All right. So we've got a couple of really good questions. So I'll start with this one here. Uh, could you please talk a little bit about the art of inviting, uh, through in-person or an email? We have a makeup event this Sunday and would like to have more people attend, but not sure we are using the right words to show them that it's worth their time. Okay. So the way that I would recommend, and, and this, this is however you would choose to invite, no matter what the format is that you're inviting toward, is to put yourself in the other person's shoes and ask yourself, what's in it for me? What would I get out of this? What would be different from, you know, me watching some YouTube videos to learn about makeup? Right? What is the unique and specific thing that you can't get anywhere else that somebody is going to get out of attending this event? And then focus on that language. All right? So if this is, um, so if you have a makeup event, uh, we want to go more than just the general, you know, get a makeover. Right? You want to learn, you want to let them know they're going to learn about the three things that are lurking in their makeup bag right now and how they can kick those to the curb and have a healthier face forever. Right? So, so you, you want to get into the specifics and you want to make it something that's enticing and interesting, that is also at the same time markedly different from the alternatives. Right? So, excuse me. Really like summer cold or something here, guys. Sorry. Um, the one time that I'm not diffusing here while I'm doing this. Um, yeah, so it's a focus, focus on what's in it for me. Focus on the outcome-based language. And then in terms of inviting, just, you know, let them know, hey, we'd love to have you. Um, we are, you know, let people know your sincere aims to help them really see a transformative result. If they feel like you're just inviting them to a thing so that you can give a sales presentation, they're not going to show up. But if they know that you're someone who is committed to helping them make it a meaningful difference in, in some way in their lives and you can speak to what that outcome will be, they're in just infinitely more interested and would, and would definitely want to join. All right. Now Gwen Reed asks, let's say you're just getting started with Get Oiling and you want to reach out to everyone in your organization, even those who did not personally enroll. I struggle with the right words to use when I don't know someone personally. This is good. Greg, can, can we show people how they can, uh, access their, their entire organization? Cause when you're using Get Oiling, you have people who have signed up who are not a Young Living member. And then you have your tree, you have your, your organization as well that you can reach out to. So I want to show you guys how to do that. And then I'll, as Greg's doing that, I'll talk about the specific language. And the thing is, is, I mean, obviously, yeah, a lot of these folks, they don't know you because you didn't enroll them personally. And this is why it's really important at the beginning of your emails, just like I was mentioning earlier, uh, for you to establish the relevance, establish the connection at the very beginning. Hey, you're receiving this because I am, uh, you know, a leader of this team in Young Living and you are someone who is in my organizational structure. We may not have met each other yet, but I want you to know that I'm here for you and this information is intended for everyone. So, you know, welcome. I'm grateful for you and, uh, you know, and then share the information that you want to share. Um, just, you know, basically do it in the same way that you would if you were standing up in front of a room. Um, you know, or if you met somebody at an event, just letting them know like, hey, yeah, I am upline of you and that means this and I'm here for you.
Cool. All right. So the, cool. Yeah. On one note, uh, all these demos are, of course, is a reported and they'll be on YouTube later if, uh, you know, if I'm going too quickly here. The tree viewer or the organizational viewer is in your contact manager. So once you've imported from the Young Living Virtual Office, just click on the management here. And it'll take you to your, to your contact manager. Over here in the right, you'll see these little icons. You can, so this view, which is the normal one, views everyone, prospects in your team, all in one big list, shows you who you are. If you click on this little, little one that looks like a little, I don't know, org chart from a, from a company or something, this views, uh, this pulls up a view that's very, very similar to your virtual office. So it's got, you know, you can click here and there'll be people that are in, uh, you know, in the list. You know, if there's more than one person, you can, for more than one person with a little tree, you can do that. But in this case, uh, so if you wanted to message just certain legs, you can do that. So like if I want to message this leg here, I can put that, select that person, click actions, uh, and then, or you can mail or text, whatever. You can give people better, or you can apply other things like tags or anything, but whatever. But in this case, I'll just say, or text them. The process is really the same. There's this checkbox that says also text the downline of each selected contact. And then you'll end up, um, when you hit send over there, what it's going to do is then send it to everyone who's in that specific leg. So you can, uh, check more than one leg. And then you can check as many as you want to. So if you've got, um, you know, if you've got, let's say four legs in your team and three of them are actively managed, um, you can just check the one that you want to mail or, um, whatever you want to do. So yeah, that's how that works. Hopefully that helped.
Okay. Okay. Along these lines, Terry just asked, um, how do you download this if you have a leg that does not want you? Okay. You, you got the question answered. So for those of you who, who might have the same question watching the replay or even here right now with us live, if you've got a leg, uh, that whose leader doesn't want you to contact their folks, all you have to do is just not check their leg. Like what Greg was just showing here. You can selectively do that. And did we, I, I forget, did, did we show the personalization tag already? Cause we did have some hands up about that, just really quick while we're here. And then we've got a great question from Karen that I would like to answer as well.
Uh, so yeah, the first one, I mean, you can personalize the leg mailer as well. So if you're mailing or texting specific legs, I'll say these are the three I want to contact. Um, this little bubble thing works here, you can put on that, put in the first name of the contact. Uh, and then of course, copy and paste it wherever you want it to be, because it's a button that can show up where you want to go.
Including in the subject line, right?
Including in the subject line, you can put it in both places. The mailing the leg, just be sure to check this mail down line box when you want to go through and get everyone, get everyone who's in that leg.
Awesome.
The other thing I've heard of some people doing, and it depends on your team size, is I know instead of Young Living, you can filter before you import into Get Oiling, some people filter out the people they don't want to be imported. That's another approach. Um, but if you have everyone in there like most people do, this is a, that's a, that's a good idea. So yeah, that, here, that's for whoever had that question.
All right. Great. All right. Now we have a question from Karen. Um, so Karen says, I'm just starting. What makes your site different from the other websites dedicated to Young Living? Examples of what makes you different need to decide. And also she says this is a helpful training and she's learning some great tips. So we're glad and we're glad you're here. Um, so to, to be completely frank, um, there is not another single service uh, that you can enroll in to serve your Young Living business that covers the breadth of capability that Get Oiling does and not by a mile. Okay. There are other services that provide a website, maybe a contact manager. Uh, there are some services that, uh, that provide just texting. Some of those are really popular. The, the benefit, the biggest benefit that you will find in working with us as opposed to one or many, and that's, that's an important caveat there, many other services to serve your Young Living business, is that you have everything you need under one roof for one price without the need to learn how to figure out how to make different services talk to each other. So if you want to do text marketing, but you also want to do email marketing, if you aren't using us, you may wind up using two or three other services. If you also want to use Zoom, add another thing to that pile that you have to manage a login for, learn how to use and then connect together with all of your other stuff. We have the one singular, most comprehensive business building platform that exists for you to grow your Young Living and we're made by and for Young Living distributors. So we not just, we, we don't just give you everything that you need in one system that is easy to learn and use. And however, you know, whatever the way is that you, that you intend to use it, we also train you on how to use those things. And when you reach out to us, you are going to be getting this gentleman here who built the thing, right? Uh, if you have marketing questions, you can hear from me and here in the next coming weeks, you're gonna learn about more of our team. Uh, we're very, um, we're growing and that we're very, very excited to be a small business that keeps things personal. Um, so that, you know, like these features, what we just shared today, this is a direct result of folks like you who have joined us, who are working with us, who ask for this thing to behave a certain way or to do a certain thing. And, and, and of course we listen and read all of our emails and, uh, and, and support directly. And then of course, our, our system has grown as a result of that exact kind of feedback. Because we started out as just a website, right? We started out as a website and then a contact manager and then more and more and more and more to be able to serve anyone who's just getting started all the way up to the crown. So I hope that that helps. Ask any questions that you have. Um, let's see, we did have a couple more coming in the Q and A. All right. Oh, there's another, um, if we invite someone and they say they can't make it to the live event or to the event or specific, uh, live or specific event we are inviting them to, how can we turn it around and invite them to something else without being pushy? Ah, this is such, you've got good questions. I wish I knew your name. All right. So if you're inviting someone, and actually I did, it was a couple of weeks ago. Uh, there was, uh, in our, in our weekly work session, we talked about getting, um, we talked about inviting, right, and, and the basics of enrolling. I think if you, if you look for how to enroll forty people a week, this is gonna be in there. And, and the one before that and after that are gonna be talking about similar stuff. So, okay. Um, if they can't make it, say, okay, cool, already have a thing ready to invite them to. That's not the thing that you just invited them to. All right. So what you've done, and this is in the lead-up to inviting, is you have had a conversation that, in, in which you have explored the reasons why someone would be open to the information that you're sharing. They have, because you've asked good questions, shared with you some problem that they're looking to solve. And you're proposing that they attend this thing as a means to learning how to solve that problem, right? So now your reason to invite is tied directly to something that matters to them that they want to take care of. So if the live option doesn't work, it just makes sense to offer them another way to receive the information. And what I talk about in that training is that you need to have three things available at all times when you're inviting. A live local presentation, and that can be a class, it can be one-on-one in your living room or their living room or coffee shop or whatever. Then you can have a live online presentation, which can be a group presentation or a one-on-one presentation in Zoom long distance or local if they're just busy. Um, and then finally a recorded option. So if somebody says, oh, can't do Thursday when you're here in town, oh, can't do Saturday when you're online. Okay, cool. Do you have fifteen minutes right now? Because we're talking about helping them solve a problem. And if they're truly wanting to solve that problem that you've just talked about, which is your homework, don't invite until you've got that part figured out. Because then it just makes sense to go through the whole line of opportunities. And then they give you that fifteen or twenty minutes to review online materials, right? And you just follow the process as you would if they had come to a class. All right. All right. So let's see. Oh, um, Diane has a couple of great questions. Um, one of them is how do I create a newsletter, um, that I can save and then be ready to send when it's the first of the month? Uh, we have a newsletters training, uh, that where you can actually learn about more of this feature, but we can show you real quick while we're still here, exactly where you can go and find the saved replies feature that has newsletter templates that you can just plug your pictures and text into, uh, and save as a saved reply. So that on the first of the month, you just pull it up, use that, that custom tag for the first name, plug in your information and send it off. Make your newsletters become a five-minute activity once a month. All right.
Camera screen now, it is, um, slow one on. There we go. Save replies. All right. So what those are, if I click on contact settings, this is how to set this up. So if you know you're gonna be writing this thing well in advance, go under contact settings and scroll down to save replies over here. You can create a new one, um, or I can edit the new one or edit an existing one, I mean, but there's a create button down here. Just give it a name, the subject and the body that you want to appear here. And it's got the little tag thing, so you can click on that and put in your tags and first line, everything you want here, it's got all the same controls. And once you have it all written up, this is just like a newsletter, you can create the saved reply or save an existing one or update the existing one. And then when you go to send, after you've, uh, created your saved reply here, when you go over to send it, you can, um, I'll just say mail. Uh, and then there's a little save replies drop down up here. And then all of your saved replies that you have show up here. And all you have to do is, all you have to do is click the one you want. So I think we've done some previous weeks, so I'll put this one about the farmer's market. And then, um, it'll just pre-fill it here. If we've had graphics, those would show up. Uh, those will all just pop in wherever you want to go. So you can just make it in advance, that way edit it as many times as you want. Then when you're ready to go and it's like all finalized, if you want it to send out, um, you could schedule it if you wanted to. You know, let's say you're working late at night, you don't want to send a text at 1:00 AM or something. You can schedule it for the next morning or just send it right now if you're very, very tired.
Awesome, awesome. All right. Diane also asked, um, feedback on how to know if you're sending too many emails. There is not really a scientific formula to this in the industry at large. I think that you can tell, um, when you go to your messages, actually, um, which is under your contact manager, you can actually see, and I guess it would, this would be helpful, if you could share your screen and show Greg. Um, you can actually see the percentage of people who have opened emails. I don't know if we'll have a lot of information in this particular, uh, in this demo account, but you'll see where you can find it in yours. Um, you can see the percentage of people who have opened the email and who have clicked the email. Um, what you want to do, uh, just as, as a measure of improvement for yourself is to, you know, work on getting these numbers up. And this definitely does tie into how are you titling your, 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 your emails, right? So people are interested enough to open them. Um, and then making sure that you're following through on other measures as well. So making sure that you are emailing regularly enough. Cause the thing is, if you don't, if somebody opts into your email list and you don't email them enough, they're gonna forget who you are and then they're, they might mark you as spam or something. If, you know, you don't email them for two months after they signed up. So it is important, I would say just once a week, uh, is, is great. Um, if you are working through a sequence and teaching something, then obviously people can expect to hear from you more frequently. You set that expectation on your first email. Um, but, you know, set expectations and follow through. If people expect to hear from you twice a week, then deliver twice a week. If they expect to hear from you a little less often, I would say go for once a week. Um, and then, you know, if you want to have a monthly newsletter, you can do that as well. Uh, one of the things that I definitely recommend that you do, if you really want to get serious about this type of strategy with newsletters and email content creation, is to get out there and find other people that are operating at a high level that, that are, that, that have email marketing lists and, and observe the types of things that they're doing. Because success leaves clues and you can kind of get an idea, an inspiration from others um, about the frequency, maybe you like it, maybe you don't. There are things that you can, can take away from that. Because there's not, there's not a clear scientific answer to that. There are people who email every day who do incredibly well. There are people who email once every two weeks or once a month. Like I'm, I am on, one of the best copywriters in the world, I've been on his list for years. Sometimes he doesn't write for three weeks, but I look for that email because he's incredible, right? Um, but then there is, you know, there's another guy whose list I'm on and sometimes they'll email twice a day, right? So, um, that, I, I'm not really for him, you know, but there's other people who are. So if that makes sense. All right. We're gonna get to a couple more of your questions and then we're gonna let you guys get going. If you do not, uh, if, if we don't have time to answer everything, um, cause obviously I want to keep in mind you guys, you know, have work to do. Uh, you can always send emails into us, uh, let us know. And we can bring you out on a future session and just dive deep on a particular topic as well. All right. Um, we did get, uh, Gwen had some feedback, I don't know if you saw that Greg, about personalization options there. So that's something for us to file away.
On our wishlist here. So, and you also quickly touched on viewing the opens and clicks. It's under the back messages, you can see kind of the high level here. And then if you click on the subject line or any of the numbers, it does pop up a box. If you're in super into the details, you can see that, the percentages, all these different things along the, you know, there's so many different steps it has to go through to get, get through there. But, um, and the difference between, in case you don't know what the difference between like an open and a click is. So a click is when they click a link in your email. And, uh, so that's why, you know, like what you were saying earlier, actually like it's important to have those calls to action. When it gives you a little summary, click, gives you a little summary, click. Cause when email providers like Gmail see that people are clicking on your email, they kind of boost that importance as well. Uh, but in open, what that means is somebody just looked at it. Now opens, it's not a hundred percent rock solid. There are like ways that email programs can block it from tracking an open. But essentially if you see it open, that means somebody looked at, that person looked at your email. And you can see all those statistics. So usually opens are higher than clicks. Um, there are rare cases where that can be different, of course, just due to the nature of it. But, uh, yeah, so basically who viewed your email and how many people clicked on that. It's usually one is bigger than the other, opens being bigger.
Awesome. Yes, that's, that's an important distinction. So if you provided a call to action with a link to click, if you see total clicks, then that's the number of people who actually did what you told them to do. And, and like Greg said, you'll always have fewer people that did what you told them to do than opened your email. But I think the most important metric to really look for when you're, when you're analyzing this is, is sort of a ratio of the two. You want, you, you want to see that people are opening. If you see a zero opening, it could mean that people are opening. Like if you see a zero opening and some clicks, then people are actually opening and it's the thing that Greg just mentioned. But, uh, but that's, that's the kind of the thing to go off of, right? Um, you'll also, uh, over time, as you're emailing regularly, you'll be able to kind of compare. So looking at maybe one email that had like a hundred percent open rate and another one had, you know, twenty-five, look at the differences between the email header and that can give you some insight into perhaps why people didn't open. Or maybe what time of day, depending on where you are in the world, that can, that can vary as well. Don't worry too much about that kind of stuff if you're just getting started. But if you're wanting to go, you know, to the next level, then that's something to consider. Again, if you aren't emailing once a week yet, ignore everything we just said and just email. All right. Okay. So Diane says, I see valuable info in the chat. I would like to be able to come back later to see the chat info. Diane, if you could get with us privately, that's a way that, there's a way that we would be able to send that to you later on. Uh, like a, like a readout of that.
Yeah. And I think if you want to at any point, you can like highlight that all, if you click in there and hit either command or control A, they can copy and paste that off your own reference. But there is, Zoom needs to add a little save button. That would be super awesome if there was like, oh, there is. Okay. You can't see this because it doesn't let it share itself, but in the little chat window, hopefully this shows up for you too. But there's like this little button right above where it says type a message here. Uh, to the right of that, there's like a, a little triple dot icon. It's super tiny and faint, but you click on there and there's a little link that says save chat. So very hopefully that's what it is. Open up your chat panel, look to the top right of the, the type message here, click the little triple dot and then click save chat. Hopefully that will take care of it.
Awesome, awesome. That's, uh, that's, I never knew that.
You need to, to write it out.
All right. Cool. All right. Sherry has a question. Uh, when you send out an email, when you create a blog post, does it look the same as if you were able, or as if you were to just send an email? Um, so we, do we, like, if you, if you write a blog post and you share it, is that, is that what we're, we're talking about here?
Yeah. So there's a, when you're publishing a blog post, there's a little link on the bottom or a checkbox, I should say, on the bottom. All published, uh, or my email, and I can probably show you actually probably better. You know, whenever you're writing a blog post, a new one anyway, at the very bottom, when this post is published, send it to all contacts by email or text. You can check either one or both. And it is, uh, what this does, and the answer to your specific question is it could be either, depending on how you send the email. With the email, you have more control. When you send, uh, this and you check the box and publish it, it, uh, the, the title becomes the subject line and the post body becomes your email body. So that's not what you'd want to do. If you want to have like a, a little excerpt or something, then I would suggest going through your contact manager, popping and pasting your little excerpt in there, adding a link to your published blog post. It's a little bit more work that way, um, but then you can get more quick frames if you don't have the whole article in there. And, um, there are certain things, like if you have videos in your blog posts, videos don't email very well. Sometimes they're not, most of the time they're not there at all. So if you do have videos, I would suggest going through the contact manager and somehow work it with some way of making it off to that.
Yeah. I think using, using these features that Greg just showed on the screen as, as a means to send out and syndicate your blog posts when you create them is great when you're first getting started. Uh, but like as Greg mentioned, if you're going to be adding videos, which I can't recommend enough, like having something on YouTube and a blog and they point back to each other is a great way for people to find you um, and, and benefit from what you have to say and then of course be interested and buy from you and join your team and so on. So, um, what you can do to save yourself time, if you do have more advanced features in your blog posts like video, uh, is to create a saved reply like Greg was showing earlier, uh, like you would do with a newsletter, create a saved reply about a new blog post. And then what you do is, like you mentioned, you copy and paste that excerpt in there. Maybe you've got an image from it, uh, and some of the questions and, you know, questions that you might put in headline. And by the way, it's another, just a note to add on to our training from earlier, having a question in your headline, like, does this happen to you? Contact first name is a really great way to open an email, whether you're sharing a blog post or a promotion or anything else. So I hope that helps. Uh, we've got a little bit for the beginners and the more intermediate, advanced users there. All right. Good deal. So many great questions today, you guys. Uh, don't forget to come over to getoiling.com forward slash weekly work session. You want to make sure that you get onto these emails in the future. Uh, and if you have questions for us, whether you are a member of our community or not, feel free to send them our way. And we can cover the topics you're looking for on a future session. So if that is that, we've gone over quite a bit. Let's, uh, call it a day and we look forward to seeing you same time, same place next week.
Thanks, everybody. It was a great session. Later.
Take care. Bye.